Today, June 17, 2025. I ask that you please silence your cellphones and any other electronic devices. Please stand back for the prayer by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman College.
We're here in the Father's Baptist United States. We give you honor, we give you glory, and all praise, love. God, we just thank you, Father, for your presence in this meeting. Lord God, our steps of our hearts and our minds, God, we can do business here not against terrorism, Lord, in discernment. Father, we thank you for the head protection you continue to place around our first responders, Father, the families, God, and our citizens, Lord, in this great city. We thank you most of all for your Son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice for our sins on the cross, and all these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy?
Yes, Mayor. Item number five, consent agenda to item number six. I'm hoping we'll change all the items on the line for the Nick McGales who ran for the water, following the storm.
Hold on, Ms. Shancy. Can y'all please be quiet? Wait, you cannot hear on the sound when people are talking over other people. Go ahead, Ms. Shancy.
Senator Bob, consent agenda to item number six. The order remains the same, it just had to be corrected.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order with the changes?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Deloitte. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Shancy.
Taste Thursday will be June 26, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the former senior of the mall property. The Gochae Farmers Market will be Saturday, July 12, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. at the former senior of the mall property. And City of Gochae's administrative offices will be closed Thursday, July 4, and Thursday and Friday.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and we have Tracy, if she will come forward to receive the proclamation recognizing national gun violence awareness.
State of Mississippi, City of Gochae, proclamation. A proclamation recognizing national gun violence awareness. Whereas the City of Gochae recognizes national gun violence awareness and it's honored to and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence. And whereas gun violence remains a tragic and preventable crisis that claims the lives of thousands of Americans each year and impacts families, communities, and our nation as a whole. Whereas, we honor and remember the victims and survivors of gun violence and stand with the countless individuals and organizations working tirelessly to end this epidemic. Whereas, city across the nation, including Gochae, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, we affirm our collective responsibility to promote safe communities, responsible gun ownership, and common sense measures to reduce gun-related harm. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and our communities safe. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Gochae, Mississippi, by virtue of natural authority vested in me, mayor bond, do hereby recognize national gun violence awareness. And in doing so, our job, citizens, to support their local community's effort to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gochae, Mississippi, to be affixed on this the 16th day of June 2025, Mayor Casey Vaughn, Gochae, Mississippi. Thank you, Tracy. Do you want to say a few words?
You know, gun violence is a pandemic. We're losing too many people to unsecure firearms. Look here, I have free gun laws, cataloged all types of guns. I can give you my number, you need any, I'll give one to you. They don't cost a thing. You know, we're an open carry in Herman's County State. We're ranked number two in all 50 states in the worst gun laws out of all 50. We got to do something to save our youth and each other. You know, we got to look out for each other. You know, it's just what is sad is the tragedy. We just got to work with each other and see what we can do, whether our city officials or police departments, anybody, and see what you know. You got a kid going to somebody's house, don't be afraid, eh? Do you got firearms? Are they secure? If they're not, then don't send your kids. We got too many, we're losing too many people, y'all. We got to support and do something about this. It's been swept under the rug, we don't hear any more about it. Something's got to be done, just, you know, we got to do something. And thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, for coming. We're always glad to support y'all, and we thank you for your volunteerism. And now will you take a photo with the council and the state office and the city managers, city attorney, and police chief? Thank you for coming, y'all. That brings us to our business agenda. One, consideration for an abatement at 2104 Hastings Road, Gochae, Mississippi, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request from Kevin Forstman asking council to approve the abatement at 2104 Hastings. I've included in your memorandum several photos of the property. In the discussion, the code enforcement has mapped out here on your memo, which states that the property has three, has had three cases, code enforcement open cases since January of 2023. There's actually a community where there's connected to utilities at the house here that somebody actually is living in. Rubbish, trash, and debris is very visible from the patient's road. We've had several complaints from different citizens from the area. Due to the length of this code enforcement history on the property and amendments presented to the community, we're asking council to approve this, this abatement to remove all rubbish, trash, and debris from the property. To begin, I've provided you photos. If you have any questions, I'll answer them the best I can. I do see code enforcement play on this property.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item one? Any public comments? No? Do we have a motion by council to approve the abatement at 2104 Hastings Road, Gochae, Mississippi?
I make a motion we approve the abatement at 2104 Hastings Road, Gochae, Mississippi, and that a penalty is assessed to the property in the amount of 1,500 or 50% of the actual cost of the cleaning of the property, whichever is more, and shall be placed as a lien on the property.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Alvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No, sir.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Deloitte?
No comments.
Councilman Jackson?
Have they started any cleanup on this?
No, sir. This is the one we began after approving.
No, I'm saying has the owner or anything started any cleanup?
They have not. They've been contacted, I think they were in a little bit of communication with us for a while, and then they've...
Brushed it off?
...
Okay. All right, no further comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Alvin. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Consideration of a special exception that would allow a duplex in an R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 3517 Rain Tree Drive, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-18-S-E, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This was a case that we brought before council and tabled. As all of the member familiar with this, planning department received this request from Andres de Maro Perez, doing business at D&amp;D Real Estate Investments LLC. This is for a special exception that would allow duplex in R1 district. This is located on Rain Tree Drive. I did include in the original packet, as well as this packet, the background on the property, the zoning, the surrounding land use, current land use, and the comprehensive plans, the designation, also included the criteria for the special exception approval and the UDO definition hardship. When hearing this case, the planning commission recommended the city council deny the request. The city council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception with changes or deny the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? If you do, come to the front podiums, take your first, last name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Quinn Parker. I live at 3509 Hoyt. I totally disagree with the option of bringing in a duplex into our neighborhood. We already have a lot of new construction going in. We also have drainage things that we've already have that have not been addressed. So with the new construction, we don't want duplexes coming in with additional renters. Most of the homes are being sold to individuals, and a duplex will bring in undisclosed people that may not care about their home because it's not their personal home. So I am requesting, along with a few of my other neighbors, that we, that you guys deny that option for it to be considered a duplex option, because that will open the door for additional land that is there and readily available, that instead of it becoming a single-family option, it becomes a duplex option, and that is not what we want to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Any other public comments on business agenda item number two?
My name is Adder Langford. I stay on Hart Street, and I'm just with the Green Park. We do not need a duplex in here, because when you put a duplex, you get all kinds of people, and we have children. We want to save them for our children, and duplex brings all kinds of things. And we got a new construction, new neighborhood coming in, and we got families, and we care about our neighborhood. We've been there for a while. We try to watch out for each other, try to protect each other. So when you bring something like that in, you don't know who you're going to get in coming into your neighborhood, and we do not want that. And we have safe neighborhood, we have children, so we have to keep our children, and we haven't had anything in our neighborhood so far. So that's the reason why I'm here, and I do not want a duplex in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation?
I make a motion we approve the planning commission's recommendation to deny the special exception for a duplex in an R1 zoning district.
We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Are there any other duplexes currently on those two streets or three streets?
None.
None? Okay, that's all.
Councilman College?
As usual, I certainly do appreciate the excerpts from the planning commission, what people are coming to vocalize, and the history of the area. I only know of two places in the city that actually have duplexes that are R1 zoning district, and both areas where grandfather did prior to the annexation or incorporation of the city. Something like this could possibly set a precedent, like these residents said, so it's all that matters.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Deloitte?
Yes. Everybody should realize that the planning commission is the people that really watch the rules and regulations within the city. Every time they bring something to us, it is thoroughly viewed and done by the rules. So therefore, it's very difficult for us not to follow the planning commission rules. I congratulate them on the hard work that they have continued to do in this city. So with that said, I'm proud of what the decision they made.
Thank you, Councilman Deloitte. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to thank the, you know, I think the people who want to invest here in Gochae, and that was originally a home, a single-family home, and as you can see, our planning commission's done their due diligence, and we've listened to the neighborhood, and it is a R1 zoning district for the neighbors, and we would like to keep it that way. So there are some other areas in the city that are zoned for duplex zoning, or you could apply for the same thing, that it might would fit more better with the characteristic of the neighborhood. But unfortunately, this area has a lot of land in that area, and the residents would love to keep it in R1 for the growth of their neighborhoods. So I appreciate the planning commission's recommendation and volunteerism. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three. Consider, consider a request for a seven-foot variance to side yard setback requirements for an accessory structure in a Mark MW mixed-use recreation commercial MW zoning district located at 3205 Oak Street, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-24-VAR, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request for seven-foot variance in Clarence Derrington III. Application fee of $175 was paid on April 10, 2025, and all the finished apartments have been met. Some background on this property, the applicant would like to put a 12 by 35 portable boat shed beside his house. There's approximately 13.4 feet between his house and the side property line. He stated that he would like to have about 10 to 12 inches between his home and the boat shed, which would leave about six inches between his shed and the side property line. Per the UDO, the required side setback in the marking W is 7.5 feet, and the applicant would need seven-foot variance to side yard. When this was brought before planning commission, I believe I heard there was some discussion between the applicant and the planning commission about actually attaching this to the house instead of having it as a separate structure, which would reduce the need for the seven-foot setback a little bit. I wasn't sure if they decided to move forward with that plan, so we left it as is. If he wants to reduce that, it's fine, he just wouldn't be able to increase that variance without a public hearing. So that being said, planning commission recommends the city council approve the variance with the change that proposed has to be attached to the primary structure. City council may approve this variance as requested, approve the variance with request of changes or deny the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve a seven-foot variance to side yard setback requirements for an accessory structure in a Mark MW mixed-use recreation commercial MW zoning district located at 3205 Oak Street, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-24-VAR? Motion by Councilman George. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Deloitte. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Yeah, are we going with the planning commission's recommendation that it has to be attached to the structure? Is this going to be just one of those aluminum canopy systems?
It wasn't specified in the beginning, I believe that was the...
I'm just curious how they're going to attach that to the structure and it actually become a part of the structure.
When they started discussing attachment to the, to the actual primary structure, the method of construction wasn't discussed.
Yeah, I just kind of...
The proof of the planning commission's condition, it will have to be attached.
Okay, without, either way, would they still require engineered drawings for the foundation and the building to make sure it abides by our building rating?
If it's attached, they can turn it in plans that I can review via the adopted code. If it's an accessory structure that's prefabricated, it will have to have any difference.
But either way, they will have to have engineer, well, you can look at it.
Yeah, if it's an addition attached to the structure and it's fit frame, I will be able to review the, review this with the adopted code. If it's any kind of accessory structure, a pre-engineered structure, it has to be submitted engineering question.
Was there anybody in the area that was opposed to this?
Uh, my staff's only concerns were with the roof line being only six inches from the property line, watershed.
Watershed on the end of the property. And I mean, I'm just trying to figure out the hardship on this, aside from just the property size itself and trying to... All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Deloitte?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
So if they have the runoff on the roof, like, like, because that was my question I was going to ask, by being only seven inches to the fence, are they going to have something like to get the water to flow instead of going onto somebody else's property? Because, you know, we always have issues when somebody, when the water flows on somebody else's.
So like require a gutter system or something like that?
Right, something.
Yeah, that was our concern. I mean, the storm, our stormwater, the stormwater ordinance wouldn't allow you to shed your stormwater onto neighbor's property, but we definitely don't want to get into this and it becomes a civil matter.
Right. So if it, if it, if it comes up today, y'all going to already address that in the building code?
No, we'll have to amend the motion to the stipulation for this variance is that they would have to install a gutter on the property line side of that structure.
Okay.
Is Mr. Derrington here?
Yes.
Mr. Derrington, can you come up front and state your name and address so we can ask questions?
My name is Clarence Derrington. Friends and family, namely, is chill, so that's, everybody knows who is chill. I have contacted two different contractors to put their heads together and give me some ideas on what to do. And what they have come up with is on attaching, excuse me, attaching to the house and the way that would, the water would drain to the front and to the back and not to the side where the property line is. And it would actually give us more room, given the way the planning commission had suggested between the property line and the shed. So...
So the drainage would begin on to the north, the west and the east and not the...
Yes.
Right, so it went and go to the other person's property line anyway?
Yes.
That's right, okay. Does that answer your question, Councilman College?
Well, what I would like to do is just in case, there's lots of options, but what I would do is I'd like to make a, well, let's get to the rest of the comments, I'm going to make an amendment to the motion.
Go ahead. Who joined the call?
Go ahead. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion in case the storm runoff is to the property line, that you install a gutter on that, that's that property line. So I'll make that motion.
We have an amendment by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Deloitte. Any discussion on the amendment?
No discussion.
No discussion.
All in favor on the amendment? Motion carries. And motion, we had an original motion by Councilman George and a second by Councilman Deloitte. All in favor on the first? Motion carries. Y'all have the... Okay, that brings us to business agenda item number four. Consider a request for a nine-foot variance to consider front yard setback requirements for an accessory building in an R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 5917 Old Spanish Trail, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-25-VAR, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request for a nine-foot variance to secondary front yard setback requirement for the accessory building located in 5917 Old Spanish Trail. The application fee is $175, was paid on May 6, 2025, and all other rooms and apartments have been met. Some background on this case, applicant would like to put a 30 by 60 metal garage on the side of his house. The applicant lives on Horn Lock, and the garage was relocated within the secondary front yard. He would like to place the garage 16 foot from property line within the secondary front yard, whereas the unified building ordinance requires a 25 foot setback in the secondary front yard. The applicant would need, therefore, a nine-foot variance to secondary front yard setback requirement. I've included the definitives of hardship for the council review, and upon hearing the case, planning commission recommends that the city council approve the variance presented. The city council may approve the variance request presented, approve the variance request of changes, or deny the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve the nine-foot variance to secondary front yard setback requirements for an accessory building in a R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 5917 Old Spanish Trail, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-25-VAR?
So none.
Motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Yes. We consider this a secondary front yard setback, but technically the address is Old Shell Landing Road, correct? So technically, that's the primary front setback. The secondary would be against...
The address is not off of its old Spanish Trail. The house base is Old Spanish Trail.
Yeah, but I'm saying the address is Old Spanish Trail, correct?
Correct.
So the slab is actually in the primary front yard, the side setback would be on the Oak Street side, looking at the picture here.
Old shit, this is the, the, if you look at the, this depiction here, you see on your back, the house base is Old Spanish Trail. This is Old Shell Landing Road.
Yeah.
And you see it says slab?
Yeah, I see slab, and I see Oak Street.
Secondary front yard, that's the side of the whole.
Okay, oh, okay, so where's?
This is not Oak Street you're looking at. This is Old Shell Landing.
Ignore Oak Street, that's actually...
No, I'm looking at Old Shell Landing.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I got you, I got, okay, so...
That should say Old Spanish Trail, not Oak Street.
Okay, that's what was throwing me off right there. Like I was, I was going to say, if that's the case, then it's in front of the front setback of the house, but being in the secondary yard. Okay, I just got it clear. I wanted to get clarification on that, because that was throwing me off. All right, no discussion.
Councilman Deloitte?
Is this job already started?
The slab was poured by a termally loosely contractor who had, who claimed to the owner that he got permit and did not, so he had issues.
He poured it without a permit?
We did, yes, sir.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We got a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman College. All in favor? Motion carries. Bring us to our business agenda item number five. Consideration for a property owner initiated rezoning of property from R1 low-density single-family residential to C2 community commercial zoning district located at 7313 Martin Bluff Road, GPC number, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-26-RZ, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Yes, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Henry Hank, DZVIII, doing business at AWEZ LLC, VII, for a proposed initiative to get the construction done now. The request is to rezoning, fortunately, through a doing parcel known as a different micropro. Application fee of $300 was paid on May 7, 2025, and all other rooms and apartments have been met. I've included in your packet the discussion on this matter, as well as you have the full track maps for your review. This is actually a split zone parcel, Mark Bluff Road. About two-thirds of the parcel is Zone C3 currently. The rear third, give or take, is Zone R1. Staff felt like this was an actual mistake in the zoning, which would be done other of these split zone parcels. I have to drop it before council, and council will make the decision to rezonate the parcel to, in its entirety, to one of the other designations. So we've had many like this before, council. So familiar with that, planning commission, upon hearing this case, recommends the city council approve the rezoning of the entire parcel to C2 community commercial. The city council may approve the rezon, to rezon the entire property to C2 or deny the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion by council to approve the, planning commission's recommendation to approve the property owner initiated rezoning of property from R1 low-density single-family residential to C2 community commercial zoning district located at 7313 Martin Bluff Road, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-26-RZ, PID number 85432006.00. GPC number twenty-five dash twenty-six RZ, PID number eight-five-four-three-two-zero-zero-six dot zero-zero-zero, and eight-five-four-three-two-zero-zero-seven dot zero-zero-zero.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, shall we see a sec- uh, have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
So as it stands now, they can put a business up front?
Yes, sir, the front portion of it is currently C2 zone.
I've had several residents contact me that was concerned about the location of the commercial in relation to the R1 being backed directly across the street from several residential, uh, homes. Uh, they're concerned about, uh, if it was to be changed completely back to an R1, they'd be in complete support of it, but being that it's in such close relation to the residential area, there's a lot of opposition as far as emails to me, so, uh, that is my only concern. Uh, what would be built there, I think Toppa came up in reference to storage units, and they were completely opposed to having storage units put across the street from it. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Anderson?
What was, what's previously on this piece of property, no home, trailer or a home? What was previously on this property is still, is there a home on it, or?
I really, if I have to look, I'm not sure if I can answer that down. Like, if you look back at the history, the map history and tell you, but that's.
I think it's between, uh, smaller homes on the south side of Hastings and the property that we debated recently.
We debated one there, right?
Well, I think it's between those.
Between those, okay.
There's a, there's a pigeon, there's a pigeon in, it looks like a house.
It was in the, it was in the package.
Yeah, I thought it was, I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, it is, it's one of the houses that we debated, so evidently we picked up the property.
Okay, I, I saw like that.
Councilman College?
I'm trying to go off memory, how far is that C2 setback from the right-of-way line on that west side of Martin Bluff?
You mean, where's the property line in relation to the street?
Well, you know, the C2, when the, when it was in the C2 so many years ago, back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, it was from the center line, Martin Bluff, and they offset over, and that's why we've gone through all these different rezonings from going from a C2 to an R1 and vice versa, so I can't, I'm trying to go off the top of my head.
Well, it actually.
It was like three hundred feet, wasn't it, or something like that?
Some areas it is. I ha- I wouldn't want to specifically try to answer on this parcel, but.
So if it was denied primarily, I mean, it seems like the C2 almost goes up to where the jog is, so they can still do a commercial property there if they wanted to without, without the rezoning.
I've looked at it closely, there are several commercial business, you know, allowed by the housing ordinance that could be placed on the property as it sits.
Right. Okay, that's all I have.
Councilman Gillett?
No comments.
Councilman Jackson?
Uh, so is this, this, so this is basically one that is split like R2 and commercial, am I correct?
R1 and.
Oh, R1 and commercial, okay, so, and this is not gonna be, end up spot zoning because if we approve of the, uh, the rest of it being commercial?
That would be a question for, yes, sir.
So basically you'd be issuing a finding of fact that the original zoning was a mistake, and they split his lot into two different zones, and that was a mistake, and that's what y'all have still been done with these split lots?
Okay, but we're pushing this one back to commercial, because you know, the rest of them are residential. So would that be in a, in an area that was, like, you put that, I know there's some commercial, uh, business in that area, but if we're pushing it back into commercial, would that push that area into spot zoning because it's, even though it's connected, but it's a mistake, you see what I'm saying?
If, if it is a mistake and that's supported by the record, then it would not be spot zoning.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the adjacent properties on either side are zoned in the same way, there's split zone C2 and front porch and R1 and R1 and your.
Got you.
So you could have a whole block of C2 once we change this and set a precedent?
Well, we could do that, the city could do a city-initiated comprehensive rezoning, but the reason I've decided not to do that at this time is because as these empty parcels settle, you know, you're not really sure, you know, what, what exactly the vision is for that parcel, so we kind of left it open. But if the council requests for staff to look at doing the comprehensive rezoning of the whole area, I'll certainly consider it.
Councilman George? Well, I appreciate, um, Mr. Ankerson and Josh and the planning commission working hard and, you know, I did not, I mean, citizens, is there, was there any citizens, Councilman Elbin, here tonight, did they go to the planning commission meeting?
I have emails, but I, I did encourage them to show up to the planning commission.
Okay, and this was one of the things where it's majority C2, it's only that little portion that's R1, and we rezoned up the road there, and we agreed, because this was back in the Bob Ramsey, Samantha Abel days, where they just did a blanket rezoning up there, and they didn't go level with the property line, so it was gonna be very costly for the city to go in and try to correct the error in the zoning. Um, so we were gonna leave it to each property owner as they saw fit, if they wanted to build a home or commercial, so that's what we had always said, so you're correct, Councilman, I mean, Mr. Ankerson, when you stated that. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? All opposed? We got two opposed, Councilman College and Councilman Elbin, and the rest are in favor, Ms. Montgomery, for the record. That brings us to our docket of claims, business agenda item number six, approval of the docket of claims. They've been presented, the staff presentation by the city clerk that provide online to the citizen and the council. Do we have any public comments on the docket of claims? Do we have a motion from council?
Make a motion, approve the docket claim provided that all entries there on are true, correct, properly entered and up filed.
We got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gillett, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda, we approve them in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. Does anybody wanna pull one? Consent number one, approval of the minutes from regular council meeting held June third, twenty twenty-five. Consent number two, receive April twenty twenty-five finance reports. Consent number three, receive May twenty twenty-five privilege license reports. Consent agenda item number four, authorization to remove broken furniture and equipment from the city of Goche's inventory. Consent number five, authorization to advertise for request for qualifications for the development of the Dolphin Drive CSX Grade Separation Project. Consent number six, approval of the change order number one for the Hickory Hill, La Grange and Catito Water Quality and Stormwater One-Off Improvement Project. Consent number seven, approval of the certificate of substantial completion and final play application number two, retainage for the Fairway Drive Boat Launch and Pier Project. Consent number eight, authorization for the chief of police to apply for the vested interest in K9's grant. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'd like to request, uh, poll number five and discuss that.
We're gonna pull number five, Ms. Yancey, and Ms. Montgomery. Do we have a motion to approve one through four and six through eight?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number five by Ms. Yancey.
Just please explain what we're talking about here is CSX Grade Separation Project, is this step one to doing the overpass?
We applied for, we would go over the separation for a railroad crossing elimination grant, this was our second, you're a little far away. They, after the deed briefing from not getting it last year, they explained they would not afford design and construction in one grant.
One grant.
So we went back this year, and we applied for a grant under the same grant, railroad elimination grant. And we got it for design only, which, once it's designed, increases your chances for getting the base two, but that's just how we.
Design for the whole overpass?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, design for the whole overpass?
Yes, our.
Okay.
So that's what this is for, is to design the overpass on the Dolphin Drive.
So this, this authorization is authorized to do the design for the entire overpass?
Yes, sort of, we're, this grant, sort of, this grant requires us to go out to do a request for qualifications for engineering services, which is not required under state law, but is required under federal law under this grant. So to comply with the grant, we have to do a request for qualifications
For it?
Engineering services, and that is what you are offering.
Okay, so we're, we're asking for qualification from an engineering, engineering firm to
Design.
Do the design for the overpass.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So then we'll have to design to request, so we can ask for the other button? We have to have this so we can request the second button?
I understand that, but what you're doing is you're going out, asking the engineering firm qualified to do the design.
That's.
Right.
And then, once they do the design, then we're gonna go out for bids to do the overpass.
Well, then the, my, the council, we will form a selection committee, we will select and recommend an engineer to council based on the qualifications. The council then will award the design to the engineer that selected it, then they can design the overpass. Once the overpass is designed, we will have to go back to the FRA and a project base two of the railroad.
Pretty much we'll have a shell-free project.
It's like a four-step process, I'm in step one.
Yes.
Okay. It'll be long after me and you are gone. Make a motion, authorize an, to advertise for request for qualifications for the development of the Dolphin Drive CSX Grade Separation Project.
Motion by Councilman Gillett, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our Mr. Ankerson, can somebody get the sign sheet? That brings us to our study agenda, discuss citizen comments, you got three minutes, come to the front, state your first and last name. Um, Gerald Barlow. Do you wanna just stand right there, Mr. Barlow? Just stand right there, Mr. Barlow. It's fine. Oh, okay. Well, you could have stayed there.
He used to turn it up here.
We were here several months ago concerning.
Mr. Barlow, will you state your first and last name and address?
I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay.
Gerald Barlow, thirty-eight twenty-four Shamrock Court.
Okay, go ahead.
We were here several months ago discussing the property up there, right south in my shop. I don't currently have addressed women, but I'm sure y'all are aware of. And I wondered what, what we had come up with on that sense of, the city attorney was going to check in and to see what it would take for the building inspector to be able to go on the property. And I'm, I'm really not understanding why the city can't go on a dilapidated property, how would you ever do away with a dilapidated property if you can't go on it in the zone? I, I'm not understanding that in any way, but I'm not sure this man was here that night, I think it was late here. He done it. We were going to be checked into, and everything that has been added across the front of that house in the last few years, it's been done without a building permit, is that not coming into play whatsoever that somebody can't enter?
And it should be a stop work order.
And look, I mean, there's nothing going on there now, but as we stayed then, it's, it's a dilapidated property that was built in the thirties. And a little old front room added across the front without a permit. A bedroom on the north side was added on too without a permit. The back of it's got a hole in the wall, and with that on, it was every day coming out, ones there going in all the neighbors' yards, digging holes. And it just seems that, I mean, the young lady was here crying, and she was going borrow twenty thousand dollars and complete renovation. She would never be able to borrow twenty thousand dollars on that pile of junk, and it's, it's not anchored to the anything, it's just sitting there on concrete blocks worth less than that. But the back of it's got holes in it. Uh, on the door is a living under, I don't know what's living in it, but anything that wants to go up in it. My other comment is, I appreciate y'all's services.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow.
But I'd like to find out what, what you're gonna come up with on that situation. And the other thing is, I had talked to Rusty and I think Mr. Golden about a sinkhole out of where my driveway ended at Shamrock Court.
Okay.
The, the ground is sunk, and that old concrete sunk.
Mr. Barlow, your three minutes are up, but we will get with you. Will you give your cell phone number to one of our staff in the back if you leave before the meeting, so we can reach out to you? The address you're referring to, I've got it, it was on here by another resident, and it was, um, a code violation, it was up for abatement, then it, um, planning department, yes. And they said it was so, and I think the city attorney was gonna look into it, but I think there was some question about possibly some, um, people went on the property without property owner's permission, and the city staff couldn't do that, is what we discussed at the abatement, and took photos, and the city can't use those photos if they can't get in there. So that was the issue that was stated at the abatement. So we will get with our city attorney, Mr. Denoff, get with Ms. Yancey to ask her to get with staff so somebody can reach out to you. And Ms. Morgan, our public works director, she can get with you after the meeting and get your, to make sure work order's in line for your pot help.
I'm concerned by that because the street is real narrow, like, if a school bus ever runs off in there, I'm not sure they would have turned over.
Okay, we'll get Ms. Yancey to get with them and get on it.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Barlow, the sunken part of the driveway, is that in the street or your driveway, or it's in the street, edge of the street?
It's, it's on my driveway, but it's on city property.
That never was addressed? That, that never was addressed, we discussed that months ago.
They, they came out and, and run a camera in it.
Okay.
And they said there was too much water in that sea anything, well, when you go in twenty-two manholes like that. And all the thing I can think of is a busted sewer line for all that dirt we going in.
I need to catch a dry situation.
I'm not sure.
Mr. Barlow, miss- Mr. Barlow, Mr. Morgan will get with you after the meeting if you wanna stay and get your info.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerry Fortenberry? Well, you could have stood next to him. State your first and last name and address.
Jerry Fortenberry, nineteen oh five Private Pier Drive, Private Pier intersects with Shamrock Court, and that little town about here. The, uh, the house in question is thirty-eight twelve Shamrock Court. Last time we were here, Mr. Ankerson basically told us he had no authority to go in there and look for code violations, because the house is eighty-five years old, it's all in Gordon East End, it's a piece of junk. My wife sent me down here because we have an infestation of armadilloes in our neighborhood, and we didn't enter this house. This house has been vacant for at least ten years, nobody lives there. The house is built off the ground with twelve inches, the backside is open, and Mr. Barlow and I have observed four, excuse me, two adults, two juveniles, armadillos going in and out front of their house. And I prepared my wife's fire beds up, and she's saying that there's something to do something. I called the animal control officer, and that tiger animal control officer is a known, he's, he's a best of bone catcher, he told me he does not deal with wild animals, I called him and talked to him. He said armadillos, possums, raccoons are, are the individual's responsibility, he takes no responsibility for wild animals. He takes no responsibility for wild animals, okay? Now, that's what I want to tell you. I can take care of them too. I know it's illegal to discharge a firearm in the city limits, but we're gonna be through the arm business now. What I'd like the city to do, we, we don't know how to get in touch with the owner of this house. I'd like for you to, because you sent an abatement thing to him, okay? I'd like you to send him a letter to him to get the armadillos out from under his house.
Okay.
Okay? He does, I am regardless of the code inside, okay?
Okay, well, and the ordinance, it says break vagrants and stop property care maintenance, so Ms. Shancy can get with the planning director and the city attorney and address your concerns. Okay?
Armadillos got there now. He does have a big sinkhole for his house, also want to tell you on the north end of Townsend Road, there's some potholes up there at the intersection of Townsend and Cardinal, there's a huge pothole, been there for a year.
Thank you, Mr. Fortenberry.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Denof.
We had said that no one from the city could go on that property and take pictures of the devastation of, but can those two gentlemen send pictures to the planning commission as to the structure deterioration of that property, and then we could do something with them that way?
They can if they take it from their property or from the street, they can't go on.
They can take it from their property because they're very close to, Jerry could take some good pictures from where he is.
But Mr. Denof, didn't you say they have to sign an affidavit and all that, that we couldn't use them? That's what we told another resident.
That would be if you were going to court, but they would have to come here and tell you what they observed. Yeah, that's correct.
Right.
So if you submit them, you have to sign an affidavit. Some way we need to have pictures of the way that place is.
I think you could get a, you could get a warrant.
It's terrible.
Okay. Yeah, that could, that could take place.
Place needs to be burnt down.
Mr. Denof, let's let Mr. Denof and Ms. Shancy handle this, and we've heard it, and Mr. Ankersen. That's in their jurisdiction. Okay, Daryl Williams, I mean Kevin Smith.
So that's what I'm trying to.
President Kevin, last name Smith, address is fifty-six twenty-five Town Court. My flight door is high drive outside of the tower that we had, Town Court, it was only in the, you guys put an actual letter there the day before it blew loose. In short, a baffled investigation, baffled that there was no chain walk or fire walk to the job. The search was just nonchalant. The second day that they showed up, that search was more intense. They were bending down as if they were looking for something, but the way that they courted that section off, they never searched the other road, they never canvassed it, they weren't understanding the entire way that that investigation went on, it makes me scratch my head with one hand and my butt with the other, that we're actually taxpayers paying for this. It's like a selfless species integrity, the city, the chief, and of course the mayor. The, the metal detector showed up the third day, but in the interim, the second day, a contracting alarmer showed up and cut a six-foot strip there, and I've been in the house twelve years, and I've never seen the contractor cut that grass there, so the bottom line is something needs to be done. I know that the reports that I've given included several gunshots, but for a real homicide, suicide is totally acceptable. Thank you.
Daryl Williams.
My name is Daryl Williams, twenty-three thirteen Prince George Drive, Gochay. I'm here to help both my son deal with the murder investigation that went to suicide. I feel like at this point, Gochay's not doing what they normally supposed to do as their job because of lack of evidence saying it was suicide, and it wasn't nothing validated or anything, with evidence saying anything. And at this point, I'm very angry about the situation, and I'm trying to make sure I have what I need for my comfort and my family, because at this point, I'm not sleeping because of lack of evidence or whatever, trying to be comfortable, or no one's, no one's is reaching out. So I'm, I'm just here because I need, I need closure for me and my family. Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna, Ms. Williams, first of all, you know, our hearts go out to y'all. It's a tragedy that we lose a young youth in our community. Our hearts are aching just for y'all and for the siblings and the friends and everybody. It's a touchy subject, but I had requested that our police chief and our city attorney reach out and schedule a meeting with you and your wife, the mother, to speak to you all directly. I don't feel, and we can hear from everybody here, but I, you know, everybody's saying the same concerns. In our former government, I cannot get in the day-to-day or the Ms. Shancy, unfortunately, in the day-to-day operations of investigations. This currently is still my understanding with the chief, they still are working on stuff related to this case. So I cannot ask any questions and them provide me any specific details about it. So I, we have to rely on them to meet with you, to give you evidence, and whenever's everything, and then you can tell me, he can tell me what, but I can't demand and tell them to do something, and that's a state statute requirement, unfortunately, but he can communicate with you, and the city attorney can meet with you. But we did, Councilman Jackson did meet today with Councilman-elect, with the police chief and our city attorney, and asked some questions, and if you would like, Councilman Jackson, if he's got a statement he can give you, but as I stated, I've requested that them reach out to you and either come to your home to be more comforting for you all, or y'all come here, or go to the police department to meet with you all, so you all can talk about your concerns, and then them try to address them for you. Okay, well, that, sorry about that. But Councilman Jackson, do you want?
Well, you pretty much answered, said what I was about to say, but I just want the family to know I'm in strong support of you. You don't have to worry about nobody turning their back on you, when, when it comes to this issue. When I think about the circumstance, I think about my own children, and if I was in your shoes, I'd be doing the same thing. That's pretty much all I have.
Did any of the rest that want to comment on the same topic, do y'all still want to comment, or do y'all, would y'all rather wait and let the family meet with our police chief and our city attorney and let them discuss it? And if the family wants to discuss it with everybody, is, would y'all rather do that, or do y'all want to speak? It's up to y'all. I don't want to tell y'all you cannot speak, it is public comments, and I would love for y'all to speak, I just feel like I should give y'all an option.
Christopher Williams, forty-two seventeen Drive. My concern is that, that first it was a homicide, then right before the final, y'all put it to suicide. So that's a big issue because, you know, for sure that he was a great kid. Everybody at the school and everybody said great things about him, and for y'all to do that, whoever put it out to do that is perfect, and it's, it's hurting us real bad, and we need answers, we need justice, like, we just gotta be our job, whoever it is, and take care of this for us, because like you say, if it was your child, you'd be feeling the same way, and that's my nephew. And we need help ASAP. That's all I got to say.
Did any other, other ones that wanted to speak on this topic, do y'all want, so I don't call, go down the, I'll let y'all speak, I just want, want to leave it up to y'all, because it's a...
My name is Thomas, twenty-sixty Chelsea Road, Indosia, Mississippi. The dearest is my grandson, and I just want to address that I feel that it's very unacceptable for Gochay to post that it was suicide before any evidence has been presented. I just feel that way. I just, that's very, very unacceptable for me. That's all I have to say.
Any other one on this topic before I go down to the next citizen that's not this topic? Like I said, you're more than welcome, but I didn't want to... Mr. Mark Olson.
Mark Olson, twenty-five oh four Robert Hyrum Drive, Gochay. I believe this is Gordon, Adam, and Rusty's last meeting. I'd like to thank them for the service, I know it's not a real glamorous meeting, we are Chief Beverson Fortune, and never made everybody to agree on anything, so...
I'm sorry, Mr. Olson, y'all, the chief, I'm, I'm gonna ask the chief if y'all want to wait to say address, and would say something if y'all want to wait? Okay, I just want to jog in there, some of y'all were leaving. Go ahead.
And although we often have very different opinions on things, I've always been treated with courtesy, respect, polite, professional, with no drama, and that's saying a lot in this world today, so again, enjoy your time on, enjoy working with each and every one of you. I'd be glad to buy you a drink at us, take a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mark.
Ms. Parker, you did not want to stick it was on that other topic, correct, or do you want to speak?
I'll speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Don't need to say my name and addressing.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so, so different topic.
Hi, again, Whip Parker, thirty-five oh nine Hoyt. My second address that I want to address is the drainage on Hoyt and Rain Tree. So we have some issues with how things are draining in the area, coming down through the city, we're literally the ditch that's right here by City Hall, because of the drainage here, it's flooded, and there have been times where the street has flooded even on Beasley Road. So if that's something that the address I have put in at least, I don't know, Mayor Vaughn?
Several work orders.
Fifty, let's just say fifty, work orders for the ditch. So I would like for the city to come out, to look, to do whatever needs to be done, to make sure that with the additional homes that are being built, that we are addressing that drainage, because it is affecting Beasley Road, so if you've ever come down this road during a major storm, it is flooded. So if we could do that, that would be greatly appreciated, if somebody could look at that. And I believe Mayor Vaughn has several pictures that I've sent with the roads flooded.
We all have. I mean, City Hall's right here, they can't get down there if it's flooded, I can assure you, because I can't get down there.
At all.
So they all are aware of floods.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Morgan can get with you after the meeting if he did get your info, so she can follow up.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And Ms. Parker, is this the lady that signed in before you that lives on your road? I can't read her writing, did she, did she want to speak?
No, she's not here.
Okay, thank you. Okay. As the citizen comments, unless another family member or friend wanted to speak, that had signed in on the other names, I'll be glad to let you speak, just come forward and... Chief Bevers, will you respond back and let them know your plans to meet with the family?
Basically, parents, my office will be reached out to you, I was under pressure against one of them, and what it appears, and, uh, let me have one line, make sure I can call on the family to be with them, so.
Thank you, chief. That brings us to council comments, we start with Councilman Alvin.
Yes, Ms. Shancy, I got several emails, I'm sure you've seen, in reference to possibly putting on the microphone.
I'm working on it.
Just like to address the rest of the council, and so last night, it's been a pleasure working with each of you, I've learned a little bit about each of you over the last four years. You know, my career has been based as an employee in the city, so the council side of that was something new to me, and I appreciate the help you've given me over the last four years, and I wish you all well in your endeavors in the future, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Councilman Alvin, Councilman Anderson?
I was there. Go ahead. Sir, I just want to address the employees too, the last four years, the council up here, we all appreciate the work you do each and every day, and the city wouldn't function without you, thank you for what you did. That's all I have.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to say that my heart goes out to the Williams family. Losing their son, their brother, you're in my ward, and you're just a few hundred feet in the north of my home, and that hurts me as much as it does anybody, as I lost my son to gun violence and was murdered twenty years ago. I can't tell you how much I feel for y'all and it hurt for you. And I, I hope that maybe a further investigation can prove something different than what you were told. My heart goes out to, to all of you. I'd like to say that I've enjoyed most of my twelve years here on this council. Last two has been rough, kind of thrown me back into what I went through twenty years ago, but other than that, it's been a great pleasure to serve the city of Gochay and do my best to serve the city of Gochay. And I'm going out happy, and I feel good about myself, and I, I wish the city of Gochay prosperous, all the prosperity that we can possibly get, and development and everything that we need here. And I'm looking forward to living here for the rest of my life and being a part of this community. That's all I got, thank you.
Councilman Collins?
Yes, since we're gonna kind of follow this whole, so...
Oh, I want to thank all the employees that treated me with kindness, and, and, I'm sorry, Adam.
No, you're good.
The employees, I want to thank them, especially, I'm kind of emotional, I want to especially thank all the city employees, police department, fire department, everyone has always treated me with the most respect, and, and I appreciate that from all of you. Thank you.
My turn?
Yeah. I pushed your turn a few minutes ago.
Yeah, that's all right. It's been an honor and a pleasure to represent and serve the residents of Gochay these past four terms. This includes serving with four different mayors, this one right here is still my favorite. Gordon, your second, but you're my favorite councillor. When first elected, this city had approximately eighty thousand dollars in a carryover balance for our first budget year, which is considered dire streets. That end-of-year carryover balance has now grown over four million dollars, which has allowed for much greater opportunity, great opportunities, and overall improvements in quality of life for this city. There have been some ups and downs over the years, none worse than COVID, which the city weathered fairly well. Some positives I'm proud of to have been involved with, spearheading the addition of Gochay to the past school, Gochay School District name. I know Gordon was on the council and Tom, a lot of stuff, yeah, that. Martin Bluff Bridge Project, which allows for unfloated passage of that section of road in hurricane tropical events. Splash pad of city at Gochay City Park, that was one that Mayor Vaughn and I were really involved with. Walking and exercise trail and other improvements at Gochay City Park. The multiple improvements to Shepherd State Park, considered the gem of Gochay. Martin Bluff Road sidewalk project, I know there's some concerns about some drainage, but based on the funding we had, seven hundred thousand, trying to do drainage in there would have made it a two million dollar project, we just needed something to improve the pedestrian traffic in that area, and improvements are coming along with this current project for the Catalina, the Grange area. One of the proudest things is fully backing Councilman Jackson with the implementation of vast improvements to Bay Co Park. This park is a great example of how investing in our youth can improve the community, and I would just see additional influence there. The sound effect, I love that, I mean, that is just, that's... I mean, that is just, that's, that's the best thing that could ever happen to this city. Public boat launch improvements at Fairway Drive, and we just approved a final pay app and substantial completion on, closeout project. Numerous infrastructure projects, included but not limited to several sanitary sewer projects that have greatly reduced IONI. Numerous drainage improvement projects, including the Hickory Hill, Grandview, La Grange and Catina area. Uh, major steps towards water clarification and assisting to get the ball rolling with the railroad overpass at Dolphin Drive. I'd love to see that come to fruition one day. Hope to see the following come with the funding we've already been allocated, the completion of the 3 million gallon per day nano filtration plan in South Goche. Although the equipment's here, we're just waiting on Army Corps of Engineers to build the building and install the equipment. The installation of a 1 million gallon per day nano filtration plant at the Lark Wells for North Goche. And of course, construction of Lark Park, which is currently in design. The city manager and all the departments are, in my opinion, the best on the coast. They live, breathe and love Goche. Their dedication is proven day in and day out. In closing, I feel to be leading this city in much better shape than when first elected. I wish nothing but the best for the next and future councils and look forward to watching the city continue to grow and prosper. And don't think I won't show up to a council meeting to speak my mind if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Galat.
Yeah, let's see you top that.
I didn't write nothing, that's for sure.
You don't speak from the heart.
I always speak from the heart, you know? Always, when I got on the council way back in 2009 as a councilman, I said back then, that I should believe that no one should be in politics more than 12 years. Guess what? This is year number 12, will they? Even though I skipped four years, I've actually been in politics for 12 years. I think that rule ought to be from here all the way up to that nut house up there in Washington, DC. But anyway, I've certainly enjoyed being on this council. I looked at it as a service to the community, but believe me, I had fun doing it. I had a lot of fun. It happened then since my life that I wound up on a council. Backing up a little bit, I lost my wife in March, I got elected in May, and I think then in politics saved my life. And I want to thank everybody that I have ever come into contact with, being on this council, for helping me get to where I am today. And I'm gonna be, stay like I am, I'm gonna continue to have fun for the rest of my life. And people say, why are you getting off? I say, I'm too damn old. But anyway, thank y'all for coming to these council meetings. I know I see a lot of favored faces in here. I could go into what projects I was involved in, but you know what they are. They're here in the city, some of them are working, some of them have been accomplished. And I have been a part of all of them. And again, thank y'all, thank the council for allowing me to be a member of that. Thank the public for allowing me to be on here for another four years. Hasta la vista, baby.
Thank you, Councilman, and for Mary Galat. Go ahead, Councilman Jackson.
Uh, I didn't write a speech for y'all either, so I'm gonna just be breathing. Uh, one, you keep the air conditioning up cold, we're gonna have to change, we're gonna have to put some rules on that. Um, I, uh...
You see what he's doing, he's got a coat on.
I know, he's, and he's the main one who got the air conditioner on a blizzard. Um, so, um, I do want to thank the council board for, um, uh, working hard. And then, you know, I addressed a lot of issues that are tough issues for people to accept. And, um, so I, I do thank you for being patient with me for how I deliver, because sometimes I could be a little strong with my deliverance. And I don't be trying to be offensive to anybody, I just try to, I guess, when you're trying to get some work done or trying to get something accomplished, or you got issues in the city that you're addressing, uh, your heart is into it. And you tend to become overwhelming for other people. And, um, and I know that I do that, that's some of my faults. And, um, I just want to, uh, thank you for being patient. And, uh, we've done great things as, uh, uh, Councilman, um, College has said, um, there's a lot of accomplishments that has been made since, since I've been on this board, since 2017, I've been here eight, been here eight years, I've served eight years, so two terms. And, um, we, it, it has been a lot done in Goche that people are, I guess, just not aware of, not just the amphitheater, but a multitude of things have been accomplished over the years. He addressed most of them. Um, and millions of dollars have been placed into this city. And, um, the change in Baycott Park has changed, uh, it's, it, it just changed the, uh, the, not just the look, but how people care for the city. And the crime rate has dropped, uh, drastically, truck, crime rate has dropped. I mean, it's quiet on the south side when people had so much bad to say about the south side. Now say how proud you are of our youth on the south side, because now you, even though we have our heecups, but at the same time, let's give them their flowers now. Because the young people have done well, but nobody gives them their flowers. So I want to do that for them. So I'm thanking them for, um, for, um, enjoying their city and, um, and the reducing of the crime. Even though it's still, like I said, it's still issues we address, but at the same time, it's not nowhere near like it was. What else? Um, uh, I don't want to forget, it was something I had on my mind.
You're getting old.
I know, it's, you know, it's the politics. You, you felt, you felt like it saved your life, I kid you not.
It did.
When I was, when I, when I first came on, my stress level went way up. I'm like, what in the world? I'm stressed every day, like, some of the issues I'm, I'm addressing, I'm addressing a lot of issues. People walk up to me and they come up to me and I'm, you know, and I'm willing to listen to them and address their issues. So a lot of them come to me, uh, to address the issues. So I take on a lot of people's pain. So it's a, it's my stress level through the roof. Um, and I believe through, uh, when COVID hit, I was like, uh, and I'm not gonna try, not trying to rant, but I believe when COVID hit, I, I started having anxiety. And, um, I managed to overget COVID now, but it, it was a, it's a, um, it was a unusual thing for me, because I didn't believe, you know, I didn't worry about mental things, you know, uh, disturbing, but COVID did that. And, uh, but I was able to overcome it and continue to fight, work with the city. And we do got good staff and, and, uh, our city manager has, along with Shell, Shelley, has accomplished getting a lot of grants for our city. A lot of money has come through this city that, that you, uh, you might see things that look just, you might, that you don't think that is happening because under the ground and you got sewers getting repaired, you got, uh, drainage getting repaired, this, this is millions. And, um, so it's just, uh, things that you don't recognize, the streets getting paved, et cetera, things that you don't recognize that you know, that they don't know that it's getting fixed. These things are happening in the city of Goche, and we was able to accomplish that with this board. So I'm gonna end it with that, you know, I thank you all for, uh, all you've done, the city lawyer, the city clerk, uh, keeping our books and all that, and, and the city staff and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. I don't know if there's any oxygen left. Well, you're bound to not have any because the chief's turning down the air filter.
Uh, they pretty much covered everything, but I just want to say that my, my heart, my prayers are with the Williams family, uh, and friends of, uh, the victim, and I pray that you do receive the information in the closure that you're looking for. Um, I can't imagine the shoes that you're in. And, um, and I pray that the days to come get easier. And, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman George. I just want to say, one, it's been a pleasure, um, working, um, as councilman of Board Three for two terms and then mayor for one, and I look forward to serving again. Um, we've had great boards, council, um, previous that are no longer here, some that are currently here, and then the ones to come. I feel like Goche has a great leader. The day we hired Ms. Yancy, um, was the best day for Goche. We've gotten more in federal funding, um, we've got more projects completed and done. Um, and not every day is perfect, and none of us are perfect, but she continues, the employees, um, work well with her and they're appreciative of you too, and the citizens are appreciative, and we thank you for your hard work. The time you're on call like us 24 hours, seven days a week, and our job sometime is not thanked enough. To Councilman College, um... The day, um, your mother encouraged me to run and you to run, I didn't run, you ran, and you won. She continued to motivate me, and I would sit back there with your mother in this boardroom and watch all your hard work with your wife, with your brother coming in town when he didn't live here. Um, and your hard work and all your projects has not gone unnoticed. And you're more than a council member to me, you're like a brother. Councilman Galat, when you ran for councilman and you spoke on this, Ms. Diana would be so proud of you. She's so blessed to have you and your contributions. And she was with us not a many times go by that I don't think about you and her at Mass or us at restaurants after Mass and the good times and the good memories with your children and her and just, um, continued to inspire me. Every time I needed guidance, you've always been there, um, and you've been a great benefit to me, so I thank you for your service. Councilman Anderson, we wish you well on your retirement. To the city staff, thank you for your hard work. Um, our judge, our city attorney, um, we thank you. To the council members elect, we have here, we want to thank them and recognize them tonight. We got councilmen-at-large-elect Eric Minor here, and we have councilmember-elect of Ward Four, Lorenzo Fuller back here. Let's, um, thank them and let's give the round of applause for the ones who... I think our city manager and our city attorney, they've met with our council-elect and, um, the council-elect are excited about starting and they're excited about going to MML and learning new things. And I think they got great things in mind, and I think we're gonna be able to all work together and continue to move Goche forward and keep our momentum going because we all want what's best for Goche. So I look forward to the coming four years, and I definitely look forward to MML and being able to show our new leaders all around, um, MML convention. Also, um, I want to thank the city rec department. We had two, um, actually three city events this, for this past weekend. Um, we had, um, our traditional farmer's market and, um, it was successful, thank them. We also had movie night the night before with the youth at the Sportsplex, Sportsplex, it was well attended. But the city staff is working over their hours, over their normal scheduled eight to five to have these events, so I thank all of them from each department, because there's a multitude. Miss Bang volunteers from planning, it's others from other departments, it's, it's not just recreation, so we thank them. Also, I want to thank Tawana Hunt with Hoppy Club for partnering with our city manager and our Parks and Rec Director, Chastity. We were able to have a Corvette show that was canceled in a sister city, but they reached out to myself and I put them in contact with the city manager and we were able to host, and it was a wonderful Corvette show. And councilman-elect, um, Mr. Full, Lorenzo Fuller was there, councilman-elect Eric Minor was there and got to see. Also, and Councilman Jackson, we also were able to have the, um, community market at the convention center, which is put on by Goche citizen, Mr. Goldard, known as Pastor Positive. It was a great event, and then we had the Snapper, Red Snapper Classic at, um, Mary Walker, and it was well attended, a lot of attendance there. Upstairs, downstairs, couldn't find parking at the Marina, that's how many people were in attendance. So it was just a great weekend to be out and about in Goche. And I want to encourage all of our citizens, if you find something negative, find the positive. Try to do two or three positive to your one negative, because we are blessed here in Goche. We're one of the only cities that have entertainment for our youth. The bowling alley, McNarv gaming, we have natural resources available to them, we have beautiful parks. When I was visiting the parks, when I was out and about, they were like, Mayor, we wish we had a park. When I'm over in Harrison, Hancock County, they boast about our parks here in Goche. So we should be blessed for what we have available. And, um, I just want the Williams family to know you are in our thoughts and prayers. And there is nothing I can say as a mayor or any one of us, um, when you lose a loved one, that can take the pain away. And all I can encourage you to do is like us, and as Councilman Anderson spoke earlier about his personal experience, I have personal experiences with the same type of tragedy, so does others on this board and our staff. So you are in our thoughts and prayers. I want to remind you to rely on your faith, rely on your family, rely on your friends, and you can rely on us because we're here for you if you need us. And there is no doubt in my mind that our police chief and our city attorney will meet with y'all and try to answer and help y'all in any way they possibly can help you. And, um, with that being said, I wish you all safe travels home and I hope you have all a blessed week. Ms. Yancy, Ms. Montgomery, and Mr. Danos.
Yes, sir, I request, uh, motion by the closed session, the county to declare it before...
We have a request by the city attorney to go into closed session to see if we need to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we close, go into closed session, decide if we need to go into the executive session.
We got a motion to go into closed session by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Galat. Any discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. We're in...